Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:01 PM. It is August 23rd, 2022. We are meeting in the town hall. At least you are. I'm out in the hinterlands. There is a Zoom link on the agenda. So that being said, we'll call the meeting to order. First order business is to approve the minutes, amended minutes of July 12th. And the reason for that is that the motion made after the executive session was not included in the minutes. And we need to add those in there. The motion that was made was to authorize a $5,000 retention bonus for Scott Pickup. I believe I ordered the motion and asked for a motion. And I think it was Rick Cowan that said so moved and asked for a second. And I think it was Bonnie that seconded the motion. And the motion passed unanimously five to zero. So that being said, we just need a vote in unison that that was what happened. So all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let's get that business. Additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and pressing matters that will require ratification if you're a major future meeting. I have none. Scott?
No, Peter, nothing tonight.
Anybody on the board? Okay. Let's move on to public comments on items not on the agenda. That's three minutes per person. I don't see anybody in the audience, Scott. So you may have to...
I have a few folks here. Amy's here.
Anybody?
We had her hand up.
Yeah. Can I make a comment, Peter?
Sure.
I just wanted to point out that there is a quorum of the Saxon River Village trustees here tonight. And we've come for the meeting. I don't have a comment about your appointment, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Yep. I got your email and things that you might have a group there. So we should be... Anybody else on the board out there? No? Okay.
And Carl is on the Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay. Here we know comments. Let's move to the manager's report.
Just a couple of things briefly. We did finish up paving. We're going to come back and do some chip steel at the beginning of September. And then that project will be complete. We have a second special summer meeting scheduled for the 6th. We had talked about for those public hearings that we had talked about in the limited agenda. So that will be added to our calendar for this regular six o'clock meeting, September the 6th, towards the board with a limited agenda for that. And then our regular scheduled meetings, back to our regular schedule starts on the 20th.
Okay, that's it. Very good. Let's, before we get into the main agenda, which is the update on Route 121 Bridge. Just mentioned that anyone that would wish to speak, would please state their name for the record so we know who's talking. And remember, this is a cooperative effort between Westminster and all the other towns concerned. So it is Westminster's decision with the state to do what they will with the bridge. But we're here to solicit our opinions and concerns. So that being said, we'll move right into the update. Route 121 Bridge Replacement Project. I assume JB McCarthy is in attendance.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy, you want to come up? It's a little easier to pick you up if you just jump on one of the seats here.
Sure.
That way we can make sure we get you on these microphones. It's a little clearer that way.
Let's talk about where we are, I guess.
That'd be great. Roger?
But I'll go back into the history of the job. But the job was in a scope before back in late 2018, 2019, at a meeting with the town of Westminster, went through some alternatives, settled in agreement with them on a replacement of the concrete deck. And agreed upon a 60-day closure. So that's what was designed. And there's some, you know, some approach work. We're going to widen the bridge and two feet on each side. So some improvements there. When the job was left, we hired a contractor. We went out there. We knew that there were some issues with some of the portions of the structural steel. But when the contractor set the staging underneath and got right up hands-on, he found some, started chipping away at the top plates just below the deck. So the deck sits on the top of these girders. And it was rather crumbling. And he kept digging in with his hammer and really couldn't find any solid structural steel. So we called us and we came down, met with our construction people, poked around in a few places, took a core out above an area on the girder we thought would be in best condition from the outside. And 14-inch core right above the girder. And the material was just disintegrated. And it's just as there was a top plate on these girders, only five, 16 cents thick. And that rested on two steel angles, which were three-quarter inch thick. And those angles are very good condition. So something went on, you know. This didn't happen in the last couple of years. This has been going on for quite some time, the deterioration there. So it just, you know, wasn't visible to us. So we went back to our consultant and asked, well, can we live without that plate? Because we were going to weld on these connectors to connect the new deck to the steel and end up with a stronger bridge. It's not what's out there today. And they said no. The added weight, we're adding quite a bit of concrete to the bridge, we're widening it. So we needed those plates. So we got with the contractor on the town on site back in early July, I guess. And talked about some options. And one was continue with the job, take it back off. We removed this plate. And these girders, there's two main girders that hold up this bridge, referred to as two girders, just somewhere in there, framing in between. These girders were built, this bridge was built in 1940. It was riveted steel. So we had to take these plates off and put new plates on. We were going to have to remove 2,500 rivets. Removing a rivet is not an easy process. It's a time-consuming process. It can vary from five minutes to 30 minutes from the people who've done this. We do a lot of this on railroad bridges around the state. You don't want to damage the steel that's there, that's left besides this plate we're going to take off. So you want to keep, you want to retain the existing steel. So we called around. We could, you know, there's been an issue with availability of materials, steel plates. As a result of COVID, we're sort of coming out of that cycle right now. But we were going to be able to get the plates. But it's going to be expensive and probably take two or three months just to get those rivets off. Well, there goes the 60-day cleanup. Okay. So we talked and lots of other options. And we settled with the town about let's just, let's go back, let's replace all the steel. It's 1940 steel. The abutment, there's two abutments and there's two piers, which are really in very good condition for something of that age. It's really quite remarkable. So that's where we're at now with, I have to go back to our consultant and having some of his scope and feed to redesign the steel superstructure. And we're going to put in multi-girders, multiple girder bridge rather than just two girders with framing. We're working with them now on some options of what to do. We might have to do some work on the piers because the piers are a big frame. It's hollow in the middle. And the beam or strut that connects the two columns, which held up the main girders, is just that. It's just a strut. It's not meant to rest a girder on that's going to run the length of this bridge. So that's where we're at right now. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with our consultant and our construction division and contractor that's on board right now to talk about some options. The big issue is delivery of the structural steel. And that industry is still bouncing back from COVID and the availability of material and that sort of thing. We had heard this spring that normally in a normal cycle, contractors can put an order in for a bridge like this in January and have it available in June or July. It's five to six months fabrication and delivery. During COVID, it was either wasn't available or it was 14, 16 months. We heard it was coming back down. We heard maybe it backed down next year to the five or six months. But then later in COVID, it makes it either wasn't available or it was 14 or 16. It's a year out, which is better than the 14, 16 months. So it's been 12 months. It's never going to know until you give our contractor the details and he makes calls to whoever he wants to hire to do this work, if he can get a price and a delivery date. So we're planning on having the steel available, the structural, the redesign and the plans available by the middle of September to give to our contractor and ask him for a delivery date. And based on that, we're going to then we'll make decisions on when the project's going to gear up again and when it's going to be closed. We haven't nailed down the numbers exactly, but we think this job can be done. Because now we're taking off the deck. We're taking all the structural steel off. We're doing some repairs to the piers. And then setting the new structural steel, forming up the new deck, forming the deck, and do all the approach work. We think we can get this done in eight months. I think that's a reasonable timeframe. It's somewhat different now. Normally, we, you know, we put out a contract within a certain amount of time. We have a completion date for a contractor. In this case, now we have our contractor. And we'd say, well, we'd like to have it completed then. So it's more of a negotiation type of thing. Contractors Renault Brothers out of Vernon, Vermont here. And they said they wanted to stay on board for the project. But, you know, depends on how things go. You know, if we can't get steel for a year from October or September of this year, that's probably not, then the project's not going to happen probably till '24 and not '23. If we can get steel delivered next July, then we can probably get this bridge going next summer and get it done by first of November or end of October. So that's where we're at right now. So this, you know, 60-day timeframe that the contract went out with can't be done with the amount of work that we need to do right now. So that's kind of where we're at. We have a meeting tomorrow. The first time we met with an idea of some design details and meeting with contractor. It's sort of a different kind of a process, a form of a design build here. We'll get his ideas because we're working with one contractor versus doing a set of plans and sending them out to multiple contractors. So he may have some ideas that can speak some things up. You never know. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And I met with the town of Westminster a few weeks ago. And that's the same sort of details. At that point, we were just starting to get design information from our consultant. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And we have, you know, the signs were all up for the detour in the project. And then we get covered back up, take down the message board. So this doesn't, you know, this doesn't happen very often. Our usual projects go pretty well. But whenever you're doing a rehabilitation, especially something this old, you expect things to pop up. But usually it's something you can redesign quickly during the construction and keep the job moving. The risk goes up quite a bit when you have a 60-day window initially because you can't have too many changes and maintain that 60-day window. And this was a change that we just couldn't live with in the long term. We're hoping the government will work with the town to get another 50 plus years out of this bridge. So you can't, you know, you can't skip corners on the main supports of the deck. So we take a lot of decks off bridges, whether we're going to throw the bridge away or rehab it. And you don't see this very often. You don't see that part of the steel that's up against the deck just turns into nothing. So we've done, I've done, involved in two other deck replacements this summer, one in the familiar. And they're, you know, took the steel off, took the deck off and the steel was fine, you know. So it's just one of those things that comes up now and then. Ideally, we could have, you know, done much more investigation initially, taken some. We did plenty of cores on this bridge deck to determine if we could save the bridge deck. It just kind of overlay it. We found out that the town had already done a lot of patching on this deck. It had kept the steel underneath. And really, you see, some of the structural steel under this bridge is just like, it's brand new, square edge corners. The town's kept it painted, which is why we thought we could get away with a rehabilitation in the first place. So, but just didn't get it worked out that way. So that's kind of where we're at.
Before we get started, make a statement or two. I was at that meeting, Westminster. JB, you sat right next to me there. And the question came up, well, the timeframe. At that point, it was 12 to 18 months. And now you've heard tonight that you're going to knock it down to about eight months. Do you think that's a reasonable timeframe? Also, the fact of winter maintenance on a highway going out through Saxon River. And emergency response was brought up at that meeting. Couple of weeks ago, Andy Howell, yeah, Howarth, our highway engineer manager, said that plowing is taken care of. But we go at it a different way. We don't go out through Gageville. It goes around the other direction. And they plow out, turn around and go back around the other way. So the winter maintenance is not going to be an issue except for an emergency solving issue right in the village of Saxon River. So that's taken care of. The only thing I guess that would be left would be the demolition of the bridge time, what your plans are for that, if you can let us know that. I know at that meeting, you mentioned something about March, I think, about to start demo the bridge so the detour would start somewhere around that time. And emergency response, I guess we got some time to play with that if the bridge isn't going to be demoed until March. So I'll let you go from there. If you can throw out a couple of answers to that. And then we can, people can grill you if they wish or whatever. So.
I think the 12, this 12 to 18 month timeframe has been thrown around. And I think that initially came from our discussion when we first met down at the bridge, when we found out about this problem. And I think the town of Westminster made a comment that the bridge, you know, maybe okay with the closing of the bridge for that timeframe. It never came from us. Certainly don't need 18 months to do this project. But says we can do it. I think we can do it and we'll work with our contractor. I think we can, this job can be done in eight months. And we would start it in the springtime or late, late winter and not have it sit idle over the winter. So we're trying to minimize the disruption to traffic flow. So that's, you know, all this, that's why we'd have to wait another year if we couldn't get the steel in an opportune time to build it in that summer season. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Now, at that meeting also, JB, there's a question was brought about the contractor may, once he sees the new plans and the steel and everything else in the order time, that he may want to decide not to do the job. So what's the prognosis from there?
Well, we're meeting with him tomorrow. We haven't spoken to him since the meeting that night. Yeah, we'll throw these things out and ask him again for his desire to stay with the job. He does fine. I hope he does. He's done a lot of good work for us over the years. If he decides to opt out, then we're going to have to go back and re-advertise the project. And we'll re-advertise it with obviously these updated plans. And probably, you know, this job doesn't have a slot in our advertising schedule right now. So they sometimes they could move things around. But if we did that, it wouldn't be advertised till the end of this year at the best. And then, you know, if we're still 12 months out for steel, it's just going to push it into '24, I think. I know there were some concerns came in about, you know, based on this discovery of the steel, is the bridge okay? And our bridge inspectors have been down there. We inspect this bridge every two years. And they've been down looking at it. And they're not concerned with, you know, having to post the bridge for reduced load, anything like that. So the bridge, the bridge that's out there will be fine for two more years. We're just trying to get, schedule to get it done, to get it out, get the work done. It's minimize the timeframe. So.
Okay. Well, appreciate your comments there. And I'll just turn it over to any comments anyone in the room has to make. And Scott, I see Rick's hands up to start with. So let's start there.
Yeah. So, okay. I'll make sure I get you. Yeah.
Peter, Jason Perry, Westminster Select Board Chair.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's let Jason jump in there.
A quick comment on that 12 to 18 month timeframe. That was thrown around at the very beginning of this when we noticed that there was some problems there. I did mention that at our meeting. And if you look back through the meetings, I said, do not quote me on that number. It was just a totally worst case thrown around timeframe. So, you know, and it could have been, I suppose, if we had got into it and found it when we already had it apart. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, I did see that in the minutes. And it was in quoted that you did say that, that you don't quote you on that. But I just wanted to get it out there so we'd have a starting point. And now that's been changed. So we should be all on even footing now going forward. So now, look, Rick, I guess you had your hand up to start with. So go ahead.
JB, Rick Cowan, Rockland Select Board. And I'm the liaison to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. You and I correspond.
Yeah, yep.
Thanks for your correspondence. Can you describe the bike pedestrian plans for the new configuration?
There aren't any.
I thought we were going to have a wider, a wider bridge.
Well, yeah. With the bridge out there now, I think it's, it's two, it's two foot shoulders, 10-foot lanes or left foot lane, 10-foot lanes, two foot shoulders. And we're going to go left foot lanes and three foot shoulders. So we're wide, we're getting two feet on each side. And that's, that's the minimum standard based on traffic vehicles to have that shy distance or whatever, shoulder, three feet. So we, the job went through scoping. We sent out a survey to the town, to the owner, with litany of questions. And there's a whole section there about bikes and pedestrians. And we basically didn't get any comments that there were any to worry about in this. One, that's for that. When you get something like that, we go, that opens up the rehab option a bit more because we were limited in how much we can widen this bridge.
Yeah.
Even with new steel now, the piers and abutments are only so wide. And, you know, we're going to go and widen both sides on four substructures, two of them in the river. So, you know, as far as a bike path or a bike lane, it really isn't, you know, if you're going to do something like that, you're pretty much looking at a new bridge to accommodate that, I would say.
We're getting an extra foot on either side width, right?
Yep.
So that's, used to be two feet, three feet. So we've got a little more room for bikes. I'm the previous town manager in Westminster, filled out that survey. I don't know whether he talked to the select board or not because there are a lot of people who, there's a lot of bike path there, pedestrian path that's being planned through that area. And I don't know if he consulted anybody, but there is definitely bicyclists and pedestrians who do use that bridge. And so it's good that we'll have a little more room for safety. I guess that's as much as we can hope for.
Yeah, yeah. There was a, there was a town meeting, a town, a select board meeting to discuss the alternatives and scoping report. I wasn't involved in the job at that point. So we have a separate scoping section. But I don't know, a public comment came out of that meeting for you.
Yeah. That was before both of our time. But I would, I'm reasonably confident that there was a public opinion on all that in all of the meeting. I don't think he would have done that on his own.
Yeah. Toby gave me a different take on that. But whatever, she's not on the board anymore, so.
Okay, who's next?
I think Wade's got his hand in the back.
Wade Mishawar, Fallas Falls, resident. I'm just curious, the eight-month time projected timeframe, that does include the demolition time in that eight months?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know, relate much, just that would suck.
That would be, that would be active period closure. We would be shut down, contractor went head in. And yeah, you know, great, quite a bit of work still than the previous version. And that was going to be another 60 days. So I was using some of the timeframes for that. We'll get into discussions with him. But he was really gearing up for that. There was a lot of work to be done in 60 days. And our design consultant looked at the schedule and he kind of turned before we put it out to bed that, you know, it could be done, it could have been done. But it was going to be really tight. You know, I think Renault was gearing up with a lot of staff. And, you know, the way the construction industry is, hanging on to people. It's, you know, it's a juggling act out there right now.
Yeah, good question for you. We've got some additional funds from our most recent bridge submission on our depot bridge for construction. And I know that the town of Westminster was concerned about their increasing costs. Were they eligible for the same program that we received for the depot bridge?
I'm not sure.
Because we did not have to pay a local share, even though it was a town-owned bridge. And we only have to pay for the right-of-way and design costs, which is going to save us a substantial amount of money on this bridge replacement. I had not read anything at all about the town being able to access that money. And I was curious as to how they might be able to get themselves into that list.
This is just when it just came out? You were just notified?
We got letters maybe three months ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wish I could tell you how that list was developed for the towns around the state. That there were a handful of projects that are currently under design that received 100% construction money.
Right.
And then there was, the focus was on getting some money to towns that have covered bridges and steel trust bridges that were coming up for projects to get them 100% money. I don't, I don't know how or whether it was the legislature or who picked these, it was select these towns that were selected for 100% money. Picked these, these, it was, it was select the towns that were selected for that hundred percent money. So. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, I do know they job, pretty much any jobs that were already advertised and awarded. Didn't, didn't get any money. So.
Right. We're still not a hundred percent designed. In fact, we have another presentation in September. And I think after that, we're, we're going out to bid on ours. So.
Three months ago, this job, this bridge would have, would have been awarded. And designed and everything.
Yeah.
In that, in that timeframe. So probably wouldn't have.
Yeah.
Falling into that.
Yeah.
Right. It might be worth looking into though. If you're doing that significant of a redesign, maybe you're eligible. It's a lot. Yeah, right. I mean.
But I don't think it's an eligibility thing. It's a. It's a selection by whoever. I, I can't tell you, but with it, I think this, all this, this, this came from our asset management unit. That, that programs a project and they send them to us. They came out with a list and said, you can offer these towns, notify these towns, it's going to be a hundred percent. We have a covered bridge in, um, Clarence and, um. That's just finishing up the foundation. We're not next year. That's going to get a hundred percent and stuff.
I guess, JB, the other, the other key question. So if your contractor meeting. Doesn't go well, he opts out, then your schedule goes completely off into the future, basically. At that point.
Yeah, I would say that it's, it's, it's probably going to be 2024 at the earliest. It won't be 2023 because. We'll have to put, you know, we have some redesign to do anyway.
Right.
And then, then we have to advertise it. It's, you know. It's about a three month process to get it out the door through the agency. Um. So that, you know, so at the earliest it would be advertised, be advertised next year sometime, but we want to get it out as soon as we could so that. The new contractor could get the steel order in and get it job door. Earliest year. So.
At this point, uh, JB, there's no, uh, no, uh, arrangement being made for a temporary bridge, correct? That, that's off the table at this point, as I understand it.
Yeah, this job, um, being done originally as a rehabilitation, there's actually quite a bit of right of way here. Um. So we didn't need any right of way. Um, it's a utility line on the south side. It doesn't need adjustment. Um, there's archaeology and environmental issues. There's the old abutment for the bridge that was. Covered bridge that was here previous to this bridge. Um. So there's, there's, there's environmental issues and. If we were going to put, do a temporary bridge, um. We would end the contract, we'd go back to design, we'd go back to what we call preliminary plans. And, and lay out a temporary bridge, show all those construction limits. Go get permits, maybe right of way. Um, or if it's going to be on the south side, maybe move a utility line. That's, that will add years to this. So, uh. We try to stay on alignment with these, we, we. Since Irene, um. We, we're building a lot of bridges under closure conditions because it's just, it's, it's cheaper and it's so much faster. For us to get the job out because we don't have to deal with, um, you know. Environmental permits, other people's property, even though it's only temporary, it's, you know, you have some trees and all that, all those issues. So, and a lot of towns have gone that way because we get the jobs out quicker. Um. Sometimes there is no big detour. There is, you know, 25 mile detour, which just isn't going to work.
Right.
And we have to squeeze in a temporary bridge. Um. The traffic, I can't remember, traffic on this, um, bridge, I think it was word line may have been high for doing half at a time base construction. Maintaining one lane of traffic each way. Um, the trouble with this bridge, it's just two main girders. And not multiple girders. So you can't cut the bridge in the middle. Unless you do some other structural work to put a carrying beam down the middle. And. In fact, that takes, this gets so messy.
If you end up doing a redesign, is there a possibility, since you're going to look at two, three foot lanes, to do one, four foot shared lane and one, two foot lane and still keep your travel length?
Just.
Just from a bike and pedestrian standpoint?
Yeah, the, the, the standard for that, what we end up, ended up with is, is for, is for the traffic. So we can't.
Right. I'm saying.
Shift it over and have a two foot shoulder on one side. That's. And we have to buy by, you know, uh, using, using 80% federal funds here. So we have to buy by federal standards. To a certain extent, uh. For the traffic and the speed, that's what dictates the shoulder, lane width and shoulder width. And. So any kind of shifting one way is going to. You're not going to have. You're not going to have that minimum clearance that you need on one side, even though you, you end up with a bike lane on the other. I think the bike lane is a force of.
Yeah, force of share and you can get away with it.
Yeah. So, um.
You got two foot now, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And you're going to three. So.
Yeah. I was just going to say, if, if, if the substructures were a bit wider, um. It could be a possibility. If we can, if that with new steel, we can widen out. We're still building four foot overhangs of our concrete deck over the outside beams. So, which is about. About as far as we'd like to go. I mean, otherwise you're going to have to get a thicker. A thicker deck to, to span that of channeling with overhang. So. Um, but with those existing piers and substructures, um, there's not much, not much we can do here. And to rebuild those, in, in your, your bridge. So, um. And that changes the town percentage and. Rehab versus, so.
JB, one question. Is this going to be a, uh, pre, pre, uh, made bridge that's already pre-poured concrete or are you going to pour it on site? You know?
We're, we're, yeah, we're going to pour it on site. Um. You know, and, and typically the way these are done is contractor community put up timber form work underneath and pour a full depth concrete deck. Um, we'll give them the option of using some pre-cast concrete, um. Panels that are like three inches thick. Then we pour the remainder of the deck to get an eight or nine inch deck. And, um. If we have more time, um, he can get, probably get those fabricated. It, it's quicker, it's quicker for him. To get that, because he's got to strip any form when he's done. So, um. But look, you know, we're going to talk to him about that. Um. But there's also, there's a lead time for those, those items too. Sometimes it's more expensive. Um.
Yeah.
And he's got, you know, he's got, he's got staff, he's got contractors, he can go those forms. So.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for JB? Seeing and hearing none, I guess, uh, we'll let you off the hook and thank you for coming in.
It's not really a question, Peter, but just a comment. Thank you for walking us through the temporary bridge. I, I think the concerns in Saxon's River, and I'm sure west of us. Are around school buses, emergency vehicles, the aforementioned snow plowing.
Yeah.
And understanding the scope of this project and the fact that you've really gone through all the alternatives. Makes it much easier to explain to our constituents. Um, Bellows Falls is. A critical part of an awful lot of lives in those towns. So.
We don't typically, when we, when we work on a locally owned bridge. Uh, we don't typically have a regional meeting. This was, this, uh, 121 here was a real state highway. And this was the state's bridge. Um, we've been a little bit historic. We had a regional meeting and maybe that's not, maybe that's not the right. Process we should be following. Um, when you have a situation like this with Bellows Falls and those other towns, um.
On the fact that the bridge is in Westminster.
You got everybody keying in on, on spending their money. So, um.
Okay. It looks like everybody's, uh, had their questions or had a chance to ask them and they're seeing none further. I guess, uh. Uh, Leslie, I see you're waving your hand frantically.
I have my hand up. Thank you. Uh, I just want to thank you for coming down JB. I really appreciate the time and the, um. I'm Leslie Goldman. We had some emails. I just want to make sure I understand the process. You're meeting with the contractor tomorrow and. I'm assuming he's a he, might decide not to do it. Not that he doesn't want to take this job on. Is that right? Did I understand that correctly? And if that is so, what happens after that?
He, he's indicated that's, well, the last meeting we had with Westminster that he's, he's on board.
Okay.
We, we haven't talked, we haven't shown him anything like, what am I going to build? You know, so, um, tomorrow we're going to kind of. Show him that we don't have it done yet, but we're giving, he knows bridges, he's the bridges. So, um. I don't anticipate him walking away tomorrow.
Okay.
But I don't know. I mean, you know, he may have his eyes on other jobs he wants to build in the next couple of years or he wants to bid on. Um.
A lot of staffing issues.
We, that was his concern. And you mentioned at the Westminster meeting that, um. It's hard to keep people and, 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 and do that type of work. And. Especially if there's a law that, you know, and they don't have a job. And, but I get, you, you tell them, I have a job coming up in eight months. It's calling me, you know, and maybe they won't be, I don't know.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you. You're, you're expecting him to stay on the project. And if he decides not to, then you'll put it out to bid again. Is that what's going to happen?
I think so. Yeah, that's what will happen. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Uh, well, again JB, thank you for coming down and, uh. Getting us situated where we're, where we want to be or not want to be. Uh, and some questions were answered and I'd like to thank Jason and Chuck Lawrence for coming in from Westminster and let them know we're trying to work this out and. No ill feelings or anything of that sort. So, um, it's. Job has got to be done and it's got to be done, I guess.
So can I ask another question, Peter? I'm sorry to be a pain. Leslie Goldman again. Um, I'm just wondering how, what the communication processes are between you and Rockingham? So are you in contact with Scott Pickup about this process? Just so we understand in our town, what we need to step up for? How is that going to work?
So if your project's going forward, just so that we can keep the community informed or involved. I suppose we can work with Ally and Westminster. We can work with you guys directly. It's really just to keep everybody, you know, rumors are always the more interesting than the facts.
Like I said, you, I can copy them too. I mean, we do everything totally. And I think I have Scott's inside. Just, you know, I'll knock you both since you're so, so, so connected. Yeah, that's okay. It's your company.
Final means, really.
Okay.
That's great. Oh.
Great. Thank you.
As we will then, where we are.
That helps. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we'll let you go out the door. If you run fast, you might escape before anybody else comes up. We'll, uh, we'll get along with the rest of the meeting. So if the rest of the gentlemen want to leave, that's fine. Uh. Uh, Chuck and, and, uh, Jason can leave if they would like, uh, or they can stick with just a couple of items they're doing and then we'll be finished up here in a couple of minutes. Uh, next item is to review and approve orders and warrants. And we don't have any, so we don't have to worry about that.
You know, I do actually have some. I'm just sending them around.
Okay. Then, yeah, I'll sign them when I get, get around there.
Yep.
All right. Um. So you'll start those going, uh, agenda items for September 6th meeting. As I think there's only a couple of items on there, Scott. I think you mentioned that earlier.
And we have the two public hearings, one for the boiler for grass and the other one for our train station. Um, we'll have an item on potentially to award the contract for the work at Chroma. Those bids are due back. Um, that'll be a contingent award because it's going to be greater than the current grant amount. So they're going to have to go back. Try to find federal funds depending upon how our bids come in. So we'll talk about that a little bit more on the meeting of the sixth.
Okay. Uh, joint board meeting on the 27th.
Bonnie's got a question, Peter.
Are we going to talk about the swap shop issue?
I thought we were going to work on that one on the 20th because we've also got that. We've got the cemetery commission charge. We've got a few other things that were coming. We're trying to keep the six as a limited agenda item.
Okay.
Since we added it as an extra item.
Okay.
People might not be aware, paying attention. So.
Okay. Other business. I have none. Uh. Let's start with Bonnie. Seems you're right there in the center. All right. Elijah? Rick?
Nothing.
Sue?
Nope. Almost at, thanks.
Okay. There is no need for an executive session. So I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second.
Second, then. Did we have to vote on the orders, bills and warrants or no?
We should do, uh, we should vote on the acceptance.
All right. We'll, uh. Okay. Let's go back and approve the orders, bills and warrants. Uh, need a motion?
I move to approve the orders, bills and warrants.
Second.
Our second.
Okay. Motion being seconded to approve the orders, bills and warrants. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those pose nay, motion carries. Now let's go to the last candidate and do a motion to adjourn.
I suppose that we adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming, participating in the meeting.